City of Lawrence Common Council, the meeting is now called to order. Today is December 5th, 2022, and it is now 6:32 PM. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. We ask that you bless and guide and protect our public servants and our safety out in our city. We ask all these in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we have a quorum. All councils are present. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have a couple.
Okay.
I just wanted to know if our Department of Public Works is sending the permits and everything down to Indianapolis for new builds and room additions? And if they are, are they sending them down monthly or quarterly? And quarterly, meaning every three months? Because it seems like we're not getting our permits and everything down to Indianapolis on time to the assessor's office so that our field people can go out and see additional buildings. And we're missing tax dollars and everything from our revenue. And another thing, they are getting rid of the mortgage deduction forms. So next year, I didn't want everybody to be alarmed on the mortgage deductions. So you won't be getting mortgage deductions off on your property taxes no longer. And let's see here. And I just wanted to know, roughly, I know other excluded cities, about 60 to 68% of their revenue comes from their property taxes. And some of them have police and fire and other employees. And I just want to know where we would get the local money for our police and fire. I don't know what the local government would have to do to get our property taxes or taxes to get our fair share of property taxes in for our revenue so we can pay everybody. That's all.
Any other councilors?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Smorov.
I would like to make a request again of Director of Parks, Mr. Barton, and/or the administration for an inventory of all our parks and facilities for those who are less abled. If they could submit that to our council so that we could review that in relationship to our new disability commission. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Wells?
Something that came to my attention, and it's something that I guess I knew that I had forgotten. But when we rented the Sterrett Building, I thought that we were down to two buildings that we could, citizens could rent. I did forget about what used to be, I guess, called the Pigeon Building. It's back by the, it's back off of Franklin Road behind the main park building. And that's a real nice building. It's been renovated and all. So we do have three buildings that can be rented by the public for things. The other thing is, is I wanted to publicly thank Scott Salisbury for his attention in our Samuel Records Edition. We're getting all new sewers, and it's, some of the residents aren't real happy campers about all the upheaval, but we are going to have all nice new sewers. I guess that'd be great, even though they're going to be buried and not going to see them, but at least we know we're going to have them. So Scott, thanks again for your attention in addressing all that.
Any other councilors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings, September 6th, 21st, October 3rd, October 19th, November 7th, and November 16th, 2022. In addition, special meeting that was held on 12/1/22. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Councilor Wells.
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Rusomorov. All in favor by show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the signing of vouchers. And I would note at the very end, the vouchers do include the invoice we were concerned about is on the last page.
Thank you, Councilor Denny. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor by show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of-
Can you hear me? Sorry, everybody. I accidentally muted the room when someone called in and made all that loud noise. I had to come back up. You're good now. Sorry.
Do you know when you, when the mute happened? Was it just like within the last minute?
Yeah. Really loud phone call came in.
Okay.
I had to mute him, and I run the waiting room. And so I went, clicked the mute, and I clicked like everything.
Mute all. Okay.
All right, thank you.
So we have a Lawrence resident that's joining us via Zoom. For the record, can you please just state your name and address for the record?
He may be the individual that was muted.
Okay, we'll circle back. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is reports of committees. Finance.
Madam Chair, Finance Committee met tonight, and we discussed Proposal Number 31 and recommended it with a vote of three to the full council. And it's on unfinished business there tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, committee as a whole. We met prior to this meeting. Proposal Number 24, 2022, regarding compensation for elected officials, was not recommended out of committee as a whole. We also discussed Proposal Number 32, 2022, and that was recommended, 7-2, out of committee as a whole. Code.
Madam President, we didn't have anything but during, for mid-month, I would like to have a code committee meeting December 21st at 6:00 before the regular meeting.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Freeman. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Proposal Number 24, 2022.
Madam President.
As soon as she reads it by title, you have the floor, Council Wells.
Proposal Number 24, 2022, introduced by Councilor Wells. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023 and extending the time when the same shall take effect.
Council Wells?
Thank you. In light of the recently discovered issues possibly with our budget for this year, I would like to withdraw that as the author of that.
Okay, so the sponsor has withdrawn Proposal Number 24, 2022. I think what we need to do, what we need to do is we have to approve a salary ordinance, even if we don't make any changes. So I'm going to ask you to recant your withdrawal, and then let's go ahead and just vote on Proposal Number 24, 2022, if you're okay with that, Councilor.
That's fine. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, great. So Proposal Number 24, 2022.
Clarification, is that the amended version?
Yes. So we are, I need a motion to accept the amended version of Proposal Number 24, 2022, which is a 0% pay increase for elected officials. So can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the amended version.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Maria.
Seen no discuss-
Madam President? Yes, may I ask for a roll call vote, please?
We're in discussion. Seen none. Roll call vote, Council Wells.
Yes.
This is a motion to approve the amended version.
Hold on. Put the motion on. To accept.
Yes. Councilor Rusomorov?
Yes.
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 Councilor Chavis? Yes. Councilor Russell?
No.
Councilor Denny?
Yes.
Councilor Giles?
Yes.
Councilor Shavlat?
No.
Okay, now we need, so that motion to accept the amended version, now we need a motion to approve.
7-2. Okay, hold on. Let me get my sheet.
The amended version. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended version at 0%.
Motion, Councilor Rusomorov. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Giles. Any discussion?
Wait. Stop.
All in favor by show of hands.
Who made the motions?
I'll tell you. All in favor by show of hands. Seven, eight, seven. Opposed? Motion carries 7-2.
Okay, who made the motion? Maria and Giles.
Yes. Next on the agenda is Proposal Number 30, 2022.
Proposal Number 30, 2022, introduced by Councilor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to establish an all-way stop intersection at Barksdale Way and Melroy Road.
Okay, that's been placed into code. They meet on December 21st. Next, we have Proposal Number 31, 2022.
Proposal Number 31, 2022, introduced by Councilor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance repealing Title I, Article I, Chapter III, Section II of Municipal Code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, regarding governmental structure and administration.
Is there a motion on Proposal Number 31, 2022?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Motion, Councilor Denny. Second, Councilor Rusomorov. Seen none. All in favor by show of hands. Seven. Opposed? Motion carries 7-2. Next on the agenda is Proposal Number 32, 2022.
Proposal Number 32, 2022, introduced by Councilor Chavis. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, repealing amended ordinance Number 28, 2022, authorizing the issuance of general obligation notes.
Okay, is there a motion on Proposal Number 32, 2022?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion, Councilor Denny? Second, Councilor Whitfield. Seen none. All in favor by show of hands to approve Proposal Number 32, 2022. Opposed? Motion carries 7-2. Next on the agenda is new business. Approval of 2023 meeting schedule.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the meeting schedule.
What?
Propose an amendment. For the Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, I'd propose that we move that meeting to Monday, July the 10th, so that our meeting still falls on a Monday, but it's the next Monday.
And then mid-month is?
We could keep it that same Wednesday or move it to the next Wednesday. Right now, it's July 19th.
Okay, so it would be the 10th for the first month in July and the 19th for mid-month?
Correct.
Okay.
So the 10th?
July 10th.
And then leave mid-month the 19th?
Yeah.
Yeah. That didn't change.
Do you want to make a motion to accept the amended calendar?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended calendar. It was just proposed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor by show of hands? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have the rezoning hearing. And that is 5760 Wallingwood Drive, Lawrence, Indiana. Rezone petition of the property located at 5760 Wallingwood Drive from the current underlying zoning of Dwelling Architectural District DA to the Dwelling District 3, D3 Residential Zoning District. So all who intend to testify or believe that they may testify should stand and be sworn in by the clerk.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Be seated.
Petitioner has 10 minutes to present his case.
I need to reserve any time for rebuttal at the beginning?
We'll have, petitioner will have 10 minutes. Remonstrators will have 10 minutes to present their opposition or objections. And then we'll have comments by city planning and zoning staff. Then petitioner will have five minutes for rebuttal and closing statement. And then remonstrators will have five minutes for rebuttal and for closing statement.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavis. I'm Todd Relu. I'm with the Law, Police, Shadow, and Brawn. We're here today on behalf of the Clairebell Stewart Trust. Clairebell Stewart and her husband Paul lived at a house at 5760 Wallingwood Drive for a number of years before Paul passed away. And now Clairebell is unable to keep up with the property and is sort of imagining what the future of that property is. And that brings us here today with the rezoning petition. So currently, the property is two parcels. It's about 14 acres. There's about 4.24 acres that has the manor house on it. And then there's sort of a C-shaped property that wraps around it. That's another 10 acres. Currently, part of that property, the part of the property that's closest to Wallingwood Drive is already zoned, what we call D3, Dwelling Unit 3, the zoning that we want in this case for the remainder of the property. And some of the property is still zoned for agricultural, an agricultural district. And so what we would like to have is all of the property zoned for the Dwelling Unit 3 zoning. And consistent with the staff report that the council members have received, there's a number of reasons why this rezoning petition is a good idea. Currently, the property exceeds by a significant margin the requirements for D3 zoning. But it's also, the D3 zoning is consistent with the Indianapolis-Marian County Comprehensive Plan for Future Land Use. The map that they have there suggests a suburban development, residential development in this area, and the proposed D3 zoning is consistent with that development. And it's also consistent with all of the properties along Wallingwood Drive, where the drive back to this property comes off of. Already all zoned and developed in a D3 manner. So we would, basically, by bringing it all into a D3 zoning, we're eliminating the distinction in zoning between the two. Obviously, the uses that are permitted under D3 zoning are more restrictive than the uses that are permitted under a typical agricultural zoning. Agricultural zoning, you know, farming's permitted, animal husbandry, agricultural research. If this property is moved to D3, none of those uses are permitted. Instead, we're limited to sort of residential use, consistent with what's already in that area surrounding the property to the north and to the east of it. There is no current proposed change in the land use at the moment. There is no current proposed development of the property. What the trust wants to do at this point is to go ahead and have the property rezoned in order to kind of update the zoning so that it's consistent with what's along Wallingwood Drive, in case there's a potential future development of the property, essentially to make it easier for a potential future developer to come in and develop the property. But at this time, there is no proposed plan for redevelopment or for development of that property, and it would remain the single-family residence for the immediate future. In the staff report, there are some suggested conditions associated with that. They're written in such a manner that it relates to the future proposed development of the property. It was unclear to us if that's, if those are proposed conditions that would attach to this rezoning petition, or if they're attached conditions that would go with a future development proposal for the property. But to the extent that they're attached to this rezoning petition, we found them largely to be acceptable. They relate to heritage tree conservation, replacement trees, stream protection corridors. Those are all acceptable to the trust. The requirement that a developer pay for a traffic study of Wallingwood Drive in association with any future development was also acceptable. That there be adequate buffering provided between this property and the high school facility to the southwest is also acceptable. There was one condition in here that provided a future subdivision will not be permitted any deviations for lot size. And then parentheses, it had width, street frontage, depth, building height, setbacks or lot area. Again, if that's a requirement for this rezoning to be approved, we're accepting of that. But we would propose that a few words be added at the end of that to basically say that a future subdivision will not be permitted in any deviations for lot size without appropriate variances. The idea being that if any of those things were to need to be changed, we would have to come back before this council and have any variances approved. So it would just give this council discretion to approve or disapprove of those variances in the future rather than potentially taking them off the table from the beginning. So for these reasons, the fact that it would unify the zoning on this property, consistent with the zoning in the area, consistent with the sort of land use plan from Indianapolis, Marion County, we request that the council approve this rezoning petition. Thank you.
Okay, remonstrators have 10 minutes to present their opposition or objections. You're a remonstrator?
There's a sign-up sheet in the back.
I'll get it.
You can step forward, though, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Council. My name's J.D. Missouri. I'm on the Board of Zoning Appeals, courtesy of this council, and I really appreciate that opportunity. We're all about helping Lawrence develop in a way that's meaningful and appropriate. Last year about this time, I think there was a proposal regarding the rezoning of 20 acres near the high school, which sits above Boy Scout, the Boy Scout Camp, Camp Elzer. And I made a comment that by paving that over, we're basically adding 21,000 cubic square feet of water that would flow down into the Boy Scout camp if we had a severe storm. And if you have ever watched the Eloquent City flood, you would see that those things can happen quite dramatically. And we have a Boy Scout camp which sits below these areas that are being talked about today, too, which is 14 acres as opposed to 20 acres. So you're talking about another 10,000 to 15,000 cubic square feet of water on a major, out of a major rain event. So I would be very cautious to just continuously approve ideas, although there's no development proposed. So I don't know if we got the cart before the horse here. We talked about variances. Variances actually go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, as you all know. But regardless, I do not think rezoning in a way that permits unlimited water flow down onto a Boy Scout campground is a particularly great idea. Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Missouri, and I live at 6203 Carrington Drive, Indianapolis. And there are concerns about the petition to rezone 5760 Wallingford Drive from DA to D3. Lawrence is a community of informed folks who think globally and act locally. I am a member of this community and also of the Hoosier Environmental Council, HEC. The Hoosier Environmental Council contributed to the most recent Indiana Wetland Task Force Report. The report makes recommendations to help Indiana have a healthy hydrologic water cycle system. It wants to keep Indiana from losing any more of the 85% of its original wetlands already lost due to agriculture, roads, and development. The principal concern with rezoning this area is because, according to the Land Use Typology Report, it has an ES, environmentally sensitive area designation. Rezoning could negatively impact the hydrological system. The ES overlay is intended for areas containing high-quality woodlands, wetlands, or other natural resources, resources that should be protected. This overlay's purpose is to prevent or mitigate potential damage to these resources caused by development. Lawrence has enough drainage issues as it is. Changing the zoning of this property would likely exacerbate existing problems if it is allowed to be developed. Please think long term. Avoid the short-term economic profits which will result from the rezoning if it's developed. Don't ignore the harmful ecological repercussions which will inevitably cause costly drainage problems. Please keep this property Zone DA. Doing so is in the best interest economically and ecologically of Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want you to use up your time. So Diane McKee, you're next. Please state your name and your address for the record, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Diane McKee at 5924 Boy Scout Road, Indianapolis, 46226. My major complaint about this potential rezoning is the fact that it's D3. It seems to open up a can of worms for everyone in the area. There would be, once it was rezoned that way, there would not be any control over what happened back there. And if there's the potential of a large amount, because my understanding of D3 is high-density building, to me, that means you're going to cram a bunch of houses in there close together, and that's a negative thing that we see in all these other neighborhoods of crime, all kinds of things like that, you know, traffic, inability to get in and out, and the fact that it does Wallingwood- Wallingwood does go right out to 56th Street, and you can't turn left right there is a problem, and traffic. Everybody's going to go right towards the school entrance, which is going to cause potential fatalities, people trying to turn around to the left. And it's just a very bad situation if it went with a D-3. And also, in fact, if there were a lot of buildings, houses, apartments, whatever, went in there, we had no control again, like I said. And that would entail also Boy Scout Road, which is already heavily travelable, people cutting through from Fall Creek over 256. Now we're going to have more people cutting through to get back there by way of Wallingwood and destroy it both ways, Boy Scout, Wallingwood, everywhere. So the biggest thing is, I don't begrudge the stewards for wanting to sell the property, but it seems that it could be sold in a more coherent way to fit in with the nice residential community that we have. And everyone is quiet and peaceful, and it's just a cohesive community. And if you start bringing in people who are living on top of each other, you know you're going to lose that. So again, my biggest concern is letting that zoning go through. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Dan Rapp. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Dan Rapp, 5718 Wallingwood Drive. And I assume that each one of you council members got a copy of my letter of rejections, and you have read it? Did you get it?
I turned it in.
Do you want to read it, sir? Because we did not.
I don't want to read it. I just.
Well, we don't have it.
I followed the rules that said you can write one, you turn it in. And I don't know where your process is broken down.
Pam me the letter.
I will go through.
Just hand me the letter, sir, and I will read it on the record, and then allow you to make comments and make this a draft petition.
I don't have it. I don't have it.
We have Mrs. Fazir's letter.
Okay. So subject, rezoning objection to properties, parcels, 10 acres and 4 acres. Mr. Rapp references the staff report, page 2, Table 1, and page 4. Reason, staff report, page 6, bottom paragraph, second sentence, the district should have good, thorough, fair access. Property/parcel, 10 acres, has no access. Reference, petition document, page 21, diagram. The private drive from Wallingwood Drive goes to property and/or parcel 4, 4 acres only. Not even a dirt-walking path connects the 4 acres with the 10 acres for the property or parcel. Property or parcel, 10 acres, does not meet the good, thorough, fair access requirement for D-3 zoning. Staff 4, report, page 4. Background, first paragraph, last sentence, the submitted application does not specify any changes from the current, the then-current, single-family residential uses of structures on the site. Legal notice of public hearing, first page. Request, rezone the portion of parcel numbers 49-07-01-108-009.00-407 and 49-07-01-108-010.00-407. That is DA to D-3, so both parcels are entirely zoned D-3. If the rezoning reason is only that both parcels be zoned the same, then it appears to me the solution is to rezone the portion of property and/or parcel 49-07-01-108-010. Dot 000-407, in parentheses, Wallingwood Lot, from D-3 to DA. Currently, this lot has no residence, structures, or even a utility shed. Appears to me that this Wallingwood Lot is only being used for private drive access to the 4 acres. Bottom line, disapprove the rezoning petition request as presented. It doesn't provide the justifications necessary for rezoning. Prior to D-3 rezoning approval, request that a documented study and/or plan for public road access and thoroughfare to the 10 acres parcels be presented to the rezoning board. Submitted by Daniel Rapp, 5718 Wallingwood Drive, Lawrence, Indiana, 46226.
As my memo stated, good, thorough fare wealth to the property. There is a private lane or driveway from Wallingwood Drive back to this property assessed half-million-dollar residential house on the 4 acres. But on the 10-acre plot, there is no access. So your requirement of a thoroughfare of any kind is not met. And the second part there about the zoning, the petition simply says, we want to rezone from DA to D-3, which is residential. You have to have justification. There is no justification being given. If we're going to make some property D-3, we need to know how many houses, residents, apartments are going to be there, because you have to have a public access road. Who's going to pay for this road? On whose property is this road going to be built on? Because it's only private property going back to those two parcels. And we have no clue in the future if these two parcels are going to be owned by the same people in the future. I suspect that 4 acre with the half-million-dollar house may stay. The 10 acre that is strictly agricultural, it's going to be turned into houses or apartment buildings. How are they going to get in? Airdrop? So I recommend disapproval until you get some plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Okay, so I did, we did not count the time that it took me to read that letter in the remonstrator's time slot. We do have about a minute and a half left. So if you come up, if you will, I think it would be a good use of your time and an opportunity for everyone to be able to speak. If you attempt not to be repetitious from what has already been stated, it might help things go a little faster. So I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, but it's Margot LaRue. Margot?
Can I keep that?
Yep, I just have to read it.
Just because you can't. Not me. I agree wholeheartedly with the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Margot LaRue. I'm at 5709 Wallingwood, 46226.
For the record.
I moved there less than two years ago, because it's supposed to be what my kids call my FRP, Final Resting Place. Quiet, not much traffic, and now this. And I have a huge concern about Wallingwood becoming a thoroughfare, so to speak, to get back through. Cutting through, it essentially would cut through two other neighbors' yards with the street and change their lanes. I just, I know I'm supposed to be hurrying. I don't want it. I didn't move there because I wanted more construction. I'm sick of LC and our street, and thank you, by the way, for our new sewers. They're nice. That's all.
Okay, so I'm going to have Andrea, Karen, James, Tracy, and is that Scott? So you all just, everyone that I called, please just step forward.
I have one general statement.
Are you signed up here, sir?
Yes.
What's your name?
James.
James, you'll get an opportunity. I'm going to go right in order. Andrea, I just want you all to stand up, take 30 seconds, and I'm going to give, it's my discretion to give you a couple extra minutes, and I'm going to do that, but I need you to be very brief so everyone gets an opportunity to speak. Go ahead, ma'am.
Andrea Ostrander, 5738 Wallingwood Drive. My concern is the amount of traffic that's there. We just had a road that's been paved. I've been there for 23 years. Looks nice. There's going to be a lot of construction that might be going on out there, then traffic. We don't even have sidewalks. We have people, grandparents pushing their grandbabies down the street, people walking their dogs. We don't want to see the kind of traffic that all this would bring on.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Karen. Karen, if you please just come forward, state your name, address for the record.
Karen Crainer, 5794 Wallingwood Drive. Trees. You keep changing zoning, and we lost 20 acres of old-growth trees that will take hundreds of years to get back. This is old-growth forest. I'm not saying that someone can't buy it and tear it down, but a development will strip it. They are only doing this for a development, that and the land access. He's right. There's only a small, narrow driveway leading back to the properties. There's no access.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, James is next. Sorry. I got carried away.
I just want to make one correction, Todd.
And sir, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
James Ertmer, 5770 Wallingwood Drive. Todd, all due respect, Mrs. Stewart passed away two years ago, and that's his client, so he doesn't even realize she's dead. So anyway, my wife put together a petition, and I was responsible for getting everyone in here. I ended up getting, here's a little schematic showing all the residences. But anyway, I knocked on 70 doors, 57 out of the 70 answered, 56 out of the 57 signed the petition, resulting in 83 people who signed the petition against the rezoning. So I don't know if you have that petition, but these are all my neighbors. Nobody wants it.
Thank you, sir.
Neighborhood has spoken.
Thank you.
Tracy Ashcraft, 5880 Boy Scout Road. And the only other thing I wanted to add is, is I understand he's representing it as they're not interested in developing it, but knowing, I mean, it's pretty obvious the reason that they're doing this is to make it possibly more attractive to be sold and to be sold to a developer so they can develop it. So instead of trying to fight it later, we just squash it right now and just not approve the zoning, the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Courtney, 5936 Boy Scout Road. I did sign the petition, as James said. Quickly, first and foremost, we've not had time to process this. I received this notice the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving week. We have one week back. I wanted to do my research. I did. I showed up to the chamber over here to review it. Usually, I'm a commercial real estate broker, that's my profession. I deal with rezoning petitions all the time. Those petitions are accompanied with a development plan. There is no development plan. We have nothing to look at and comment to or see we even agree with. The density level here, in my opinion, is wholly inadequate or wholly inappropriate. A DS zoning, which would roughly be about 0.4 units per acre, is a lot more appropriate than a D-3, which would allow 37.36 units on this property. In addition to the environmental sensitivity of it, the non-permeable surface area would increase dramatically. Most of that property is permeable surface area. It was referenced earlier about the stormwater runoff, which would be dramatic. All of that stormwater runoff comes into my property. A corner of this property is covered by flood zone. That flows right into my property in a dramatic fashion. If that is not addressed, and we have no plan to review to see if it's addressed or not, that's a deep concern. The greater the density of the use on the site, the more stormwater detention is going to be necessary. We don't have anything to reference that. Last but not least, the tree preservation district that was approved with the rezone of the property adjacent to this, which runs roughly 650 feet north-south along the common property line of this property to the west, and then my property which abuts it to the north is still DA. My property's DA, and you have a five-plus acre tree preserve to the west of it. It is not completely surrounded by D-3. That's an inadequate representation of the property. I vote that you deny it unless we have greater information available to us to review. Thank you.
Tishner, you have nine minutes for rebuttal. I did increase that since we allowed for additional time.
Thank you, Councilor. There are a few issues that I heard expressed today, and I respect certainly the concerns of the neighbors regarding the development of this property. And it is true that to the north, there is a zoning of DA on a number of parcels up there, but they are all developed, single-family residential properties. So the development within here in a residential manner is consistent with both of those directions of properties. There were a lot of concerns stated about environmental issues related to the property. There is an environmentally sensitive overlay that is on the northern end of that property. It does not affect some of the property to be rezoned to the southern portion of that property. Also, there obviously, there are protections, including conditions that were recommended in the staff report related to old-growth trees and sort of the replacement of any trees that would be taken out. There are also requirements that can be put in any development plan related to water detention and other water management to prevent sort of the water management issues that were discussed here today as concerns of neighboring property owners. Certainly, those are dealt with in a number of different developments regularly. There was a lot of concern in a couple of regards about traffic related to the site. Again, before the properties developed, were amenable to a condition relating to a traffic study along Wallingwood Road. And as requirements for some of these developments, I've certainly seen requirements for upgrades to roadways or other limitations that are put in place regarding development because of lack of road access. The notion that there's not road access to the 10 acres of the 14 acres, I mean, there is a drive that goes into the 4 acres that could be split off, another drive could be created within that area that goes back to the 10 acres. I mean, there are multiple options for access back there, which could be managed as private roads, you know, back on the property itself, depending on the number of developments back there. You know, Wallingwood would remain a public road. So the access issues, you know, are not that significant to the property itself. Also, with the D-3 zoning, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware. I mean, we're talking a maximum of 2.6 units per acre. We're not talking about huge apartment buildings and things like that that would be on the property, and that's not, that's not the intention. There is an interest, I think, at some time in the future, selling this property. There's not a seller lined up for the property. Rezoning is in connection with, you know, potential future development of the property. There's no making a mistake about that. It's not, it's not wholly disconnected to that. But right now, there isn't a current plan in place for that development, but there would be time for the committee to weigh in on those potential future developments as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to. Okay, I'm gonna circle back and see if we have anyone from city planning and zoning or comment.
Renee Raffelis, City of Lawrence, Executive Assistant to Department of Public Works. I worked with Matt O'Rourke from American Structure Point on the staff report that we provided to you. I did notice that there are a couple errors. They're only allowed 2.6 units per gross acres, so that would be a maximum of 37 homes on the entire 14.38 acres. Makes a little bit of a difference than the 66 that Matt put in his report. They would have to have access to entrances to the subdivision in order for it to be approved. Not quite sure how they plan to do that, but based on the information that we have in the rezoning petition that they filed, we do not see a reason to deny it at this time, but we do strongly recommend that the council impose the conditions that we requested, including that a future subdivision will not permit any deviations for the lot size, width, street frontage depth, building height setbacks, and lot area. That the developer must conform to the heritage tree conservation, replacement trees, and stream protection corridors. They would need to pay for a traffic study to confirm that Wallingwood can even handle the additional traffic that's proposed for a subdivision, and that they provide adequate buffer in between this property and the high school facility. Any future variances would not come before the council. They would go before the BZA, and then the council obviously would have the right to override that and hear it themselves. You could also put in a condition there that they would have to come to you for administrative approval to get permission to file a variance, if you'd like to do that. That way, you guys would see the plan first, see if you would even want to hear or let the BZA hear it. That would be a different option for that. Did this, you guys have any questions for staff or any other questions about our report?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I do. I wouldn't, hope I don't get in trouble. I went and walked the property today, took a look. So one of the questions I have when you guys were looking at it, the driveway, the lane? I noticed to the, I'm gonna call it the left, if I'm walking up the lane.
South?
The south. It's wide, there was more land that way. I'm talking on the street part of it. Does that belong to the property, or how much of that belongs to the house next door? Because how the house sits back the lane, you have to pass other people's houses, their side yard.
So what they did is they bought a lot in the Wallingwood subdivision, and the only thing they've used it for is the driveway to access that four acres and then the 10 acres.
So that, most of that land to the left is part of their property?
I don't have a close-up view of the property to see exactly where the driveway is on it. You know that the driveway is the only thing on the property, the lot off of Wallingwood.
Because it's not a very wide driveway. That's what I was saying.
And the lot's not very wide, too. So as a planning, I have some concerns on if they do develop this as a subdivision, are they gonna have a wide enough entrance? And they have to have two for public.
Now, the next question I had was just to make sure that, you know, I didn't do the study. There's no way that they can have a second entrance without selling some land, buying some land.
Correct.
Right?
They would have to buy another parcel on Wallingwood or somewhere along there.
Or off of Boy Scout.
It's landlocked.
If you come off of Boy Scout and buy it from the camp.
Yeah, you could come off of Boy Scout.
Straight down into the property.
Yeah, you could come off of Boy Scout and come into the back of the 10 acres.
And go around everybody's property. Right? And so that's the fear.
They'd also have to get, buy that property or get an ingress egress easement.
It didn't take the school much to buy it. So, all right, that's what I wanted to know.
Renee? Over here.
I'm sorry, Rick.
Here I am. Drainage. I know that this property is some distance from Fall Creek. Is there any kind of stream tributaries or any?
There are several streams on the property, and several, there's a big portion of it to the north is an ecologically sensitive area. And if you put the layers on our maps through the GIS, there are several streams that go to Fall Creek.
Okay.
So they are definitely gonna have to do some work to develop this property, drainage-wise, heritage trees-wise, figuring out how to get two entrances in.
So at this point, I guess I'm a little bit confused on this proposed housing. Is this, this is just a theory?
We don't know that they are gonna put housing on it right now. I mean.
Just a what?
So it's a D3, gives the appearance that at some time in the future, they would like to develop a part of subdivision. But right now, that's not what they're indicating. They're just asking for a rezoning to make it more marketable?
And the trust owns the property. The people who live there in the community are gone.
Right.
If I could.
That's the difference.
So I can't speculate on what they're planning to do in the future. Right now, with the information that we have from the city's zoning planning office and the consultant that we worked with, we don't see any reason to deny the zoning change to a D3, but we really would like to see those commitments on there to protect the development in the future if it does try to develop into a subdivision.
Madam Chair, I got one other question. I wanna make sure I'm not making an assumption. This is kind of education. That comprehensive plan that the county has?
Yes.
If the, if the land is zoned DA, right, and you, but you always have to put a future usage on a DA land?
So what Marion County's comprehensive plan looks at is they just take an area and they say, okay, we've got this, this, and this already. We need some more of this. Okay? So they're saying that DA probably isn't the best use for that property anymore because of its surrounding uses.
Even though the houses over there have been built since the 50s?
Yes. So they've got an underlining zoning of D3 as the suggested zoning.
If something changed.
If something were to change.
That's what I'm trying to get. It's very generic.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I wanna make sure.
And that's why it's important that we get our own zoning planning.
I like that, too.
Administration, so that we can control a little more of this.
Absolutely.
And what we wanna see in different areas.
Absolutely.
Renee, if I may follow up, isn't it generally common on a property like this for someone, say a developer, to speculate that they want to develop on this for them to come in and try to procure the zoning and on condition of buying it? I mean, I've seen that happen.
In my experience, in the 23-plus years that I've been here, we don't normally put the cart before the horse like this.
Right.
And get, or, you know, do the zoning without a plan.
Right. That's what I thought.
Typically, we would have a plan, the purchaser would come with a plan saying, I'd like to see this happen on this property. Would you please rezone it?
Yeah, that is exactly my concern.
Yeah, that's typically the way we would see it, but I mean, it's not.
It doesn't have to be done that way, but it's concerning that we don't have a plan. And I do feel as though, you know, someone has an idea about what they want to do with the land.
And that's why.
Because you wouldn't pay all this money to have it rezoned if you didn't.
Yep. And that's why we suggested these commitments to protect the residents in the Wallingwood neighborhood and Boy Scout and all of the city.
Can I ask you a question about that? I'm so sorry. How often do, honestly, and this is not being sarcastic, how often do we enforce commitments?
I try on every petition to enforce commitments. I have, if we get a complaint that a commitment's not being kept, I've got our inspectors. The problem is zoning is enforced by Marion County.
I'm not trying to muddy the water.
Marion County.
I'm not trying to muddy the water, but I have no faith.
That's where we need our own planning.
No faith in the commitments. Thank you.
Yep. We need our own planning so we can do our own enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah. And?
Anything else from the council for me?
Any other counselors?
If I may, just for clarification, and this may be a question that's more appropriate to the petitioners, but I'm confused as to why a request for this rezoning is not to go back to DA for all of the property instead of D3. The current development on the four acres would be permitted under a DA. Is that not correct?
The DA would be allowed to have, I mean, it has a house on it now.
Right.
So a DA zoning allows for one house per three acres. So with, you know, the 14.38, they'd be allowed four houses.
For family.
Right now. And, you know, but there, again, they're gonna need a variance for those because you have to have so much street frontage and so much.
But that's a different situation.
But that's a different situation. That's a variance from DA standards and, you know, something your BZA would consider.
But that's a.
As far as why they're doing that, you haven't asked them, Maria.
Right. So that's kind of my point as to why, if there is not an intent to plat it, which I understand will require additional reviews and possibly variances, we have an issue of two entrances that are mandatory under plating procedures, why not, if they are trying to combine the two properties so that they're more sellable and therefore be of the same zoning classification, which does make some sense, why ask for both to be D3? Why not ask for both to be DA? Because what they have on the D3 is permitted in a DA, and all of the, it seems like there's so many barriers at this point to developing this property if they are asking for D3 in order to plat it, especially in terms of the additional entrances and accesses, that it just seems as if it doesn't make sense unless the complete intent is to develop it and plat it. I just don't see the reason. Do you see my logic that I'm struggling with?
That's not a question I can answer for them.
Okay. So why don't we, let's do this. We're gonna move this process along, and maybe the petitioner will address that in rebuttal, but the petitioner has five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, Renee, so much for your time.
Thank you.
And for closing statement.
Didn't he already do rebuttal?
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
He did.
We're generally in agreement with the report of staff with regard to this matter. As I indicated before, the conditions that the staff has placed on this are acceptable to the petitioner in this case. As Renee indicated, they're designed to protect the residents in that area, and certainly, you know, the intent would be to follow those. I've been involved in the enforcement of commitments on other properties, so I can tell you that in Marion County, they are enforced from time to time, including by neighboring, neighboring property owners who I've represented in those cases. So I do respect the interests of the neighboring property owners with regard to the property as well. You know, I, there is at some point in the future likely to be a development on this property, and this zoning is one step in that process, certainly. You know, I think in the future, when the plan comes forward for that, which there is no plan yet, I mean, there's not, we're not sitting on a plan that we're gonna roll out in the future or something like that. There is no plan at this time to present. If there was, it would have been presented as a joint effort with the rezoning. You know, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on that and to have their concerns about the environmental issues, about the drainage issues, about access issues addressed at that time. And obviously, there are other hurdles to the development of this property, much of which you've heard about, that do not directly relate to the zoning of the property. I think for the reasons in the staff report, that this is in fact consistent with what the land use sort of plan is for this property overall, and that it's consistent with the development on Wallingwood Drive, indicates that this is a generally acceptable use of this property in the area. And certainly, I think there are many opportunities, including through the commitments and other things, to make sure that the residents are protected in connection with the proposed development of the property when that eventually occurs, if it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Remonstrators, choose wisely. You have five minutes.
She's been chipping at the bed.
Five minutes for rebuttal.
I live at 5770 Wallingwood Drive. I have a little bit of a throat issue, so pardon me. We live right next to what we call Stewart's Lane, so the houses you walked between today were just to the north. It was my husband, James, who took the petition around and got 83 of our neighbors to sign it. So hopefully, you have, all will have that petition and can read our full objection. We believe that the property in question is not fit for rezoning and unsuitable for up to however many houses are being planned. Rezoning and developing the property will hurt our property values, our privacy, our natural surroundings, our well-kept neighborhood. Our neighborhood is the type you think of when you hear our city slogan, "Lawrence is Beautiful," with the tagline, "Together, we can keep it that way." And that's what we're asking you to help us do. And we feel it's critical to bring up possible development now, since one wrong decision can steamroll, both literally and figuratively. So we knew Paul and Connie Stewart, they were our neighbors. I mean, we would, we can see their house from our back windows. So we are close, and James and I feel we are the ones most likely to be affected by any change there. As others have said, the property is landlocked, no major street. We fear that that driveway would turn into a two-lane road that would run right under our bedroom windows. So that's a, that's a big consideration, and it would possibly carry hundreds of cars a day. And such a street would bring noise, odors from vehicle exhaust, pollution, littering, and such a street would run right along our backyard. And our backyard has been designated a National Wildlife Federation certified wildlife habit. It's full of perennials, native plants, and a large vegetable garden. And such a street, as I said, would run right under our bedroom windows and destroying our privacy and sanctity in our own home. Second, you have to consider the irreparable damage to the environment from the development. The property in question has, I mean, they are tall, old, beautiful trees. These trees are 100, 200 years old. We're talking about trees from possibly the 1700s, right here in Lawrence, if you can believe that. And there was a neighbor on Boy Scout Road who became a forester. As a boy, he would roam the land and the property in our area, and that inspired him to become a forester. So that's a huge statement at the splendor that we have in that area. And also, right behind our house, there is some sort of a spring-fed stream that would obviously, you saw it, you know, that would be affected and possibly polluted. Third, Wallingwood Drive itself would become negatively impacted. Not long ago, I was walking my dog. Right in front of my house were the road curves, and it's not uncommon, a car came careening around the curve, and I mean, I had to jump out of the way. And this would be, you know, even worse because you'd have people coming out of the street, and you'd have people speeding around the curve, and it becomes a very dangerous And then also a traffic study. If there's any traffic study, you know, it needs to be done in many seasons because the street is much busier in the warmer weather. You know, we've got mowers, we've got walkers, runners, bicyclists. We have Lawrence Central High School students who run in packs, you know, width of Wallingwood Drive in their training. So that's another worry. And then no one has mentioned the noise. I mean, this council has heard about the noise coming from Lawrence Central High School. For that reason alone, this property is uninhabitable by any new development. Who, you know, would want to have, you know, the music, the blaring, the blaring microphones, the cannon sounds? I mean, now they have fireworks, they've always had fireworks, but now they have a cannon, or it sounds like a cannon. And it like shakes our windows. And if we're complaining about it, imagine, you're gonna have triple the number of people who would buy new property or buy new homes coming to this ward complaining about the same thing. They'll be. the same thing. They'll be in quite a shock from the obtrusive noise level, you know, when they can't even have a quiet dinner conversation in their home or put their babies to sleep. I mean, it's just not something I think can be done in good conscience to approve this land. It just doesn't seem feasible.
You have about 10 seconds, ma'am.
So we are invested in our homes, as our neighbors are, you know, just, there's many tangible and intangible things, and we ask you to please deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Okay, counselors. I'm going to go ahead and close the zoning hearing. We've gone through the full process. We will need to take a roll call vote on this. Counsel Russell had to leave early, but she is still on the Zoom meeting. Therefore, that will require a roll call vote. Your vote will either be to grant or to deny the petition 2022-ZON-01. Now it'll just be roll call. Counsel Wells.
Nigh.
Counsel Russomoroff.
Nigh.
Counsel Whitfield.
Denied.
Counsel Freeman.
Denied.
Counsel Chavis.
Denied.
Counsel Russell.
Denied.
Counsel Denny.
Denied.
Counsel Giles.
Denied.
Counsel Chevlot.
Denied.
Motion carries unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.
We done?
We are adjourned. Hold up, counsel.
We're not adjourned.
Hold on, counsel. Let's give a minute. If you folks would like to leave, go right ahead and do that. We still have one or two things to discuss as a council. Just give everybody a minute. Is Counsel Russell, we might need to get her back on. We don't have anything to vote on, though. We don't have anything to vote on, right? We're still meeting.
We're still in the meeting.
Oh, sorry, but thank you so much. We appreciate you. We're just going to take a brief, we're going to take a brief recess while we clear the room. We're just going to take a brief recess. What are we doing? I mean, there's too many people moving around. What are we doing, comments of the administration? We're doing all of it.
It's bad.
We still got like a couple things, citizens, dah 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 dah. I got too happy. I was too excited. Do you want to sign any of this now or after? We're going to start in like 30 seconds. Rick, let Maria know. We're starting in like 60 seconds. Let Maria know we're starting back in 60 seconds.
Why didn't we adjourn?
Until they clear, we actually weren't done. We still have administrative comments, counselors' comments. I didn't finish the agenda. I just got too excited.
There's more on the agenda.
I was ready to go.
Can you tell I was?
And then plus, it's good because they can clear out and we can wrap up.
Curtis? He's sitting there and he zoomed in up there.
If you could please step outside, I'm sorry. If you could please clear the room, we need to finish up the council meeting.
It's on Midhoffer. No, it's got to be less than 40. It's got to be 42nd and Midhoffer instead of 46. That's his land there. He finally sold it. It's been for sale for quite a while.
He's sold a lot of his land.
Yeah, it's been, okay, because it's been, it's been for sale for, I've been watching it.
The land behind the fire station, he owned that. That got sold.
So there you go.
They're going to develop.
Yeah, develop all that. See, now here, I have, you guys get the Walmart and all that stuff. Take all the house farm with you, too. You like our...
No. No one. You know what? My mother, darn it, he's gone. My mother told me this. You have a water bill. Does this show where over 65 you get it?
Real stud compared to the new stud?
That was real wood.
Bill, and it's no longer on there now.
It was a real two-by-four. It was locally, locally.
Give me your driver's license and your bill drops on 15th and 19th.
It's like an old 57 car.
The nails. I was pulling nails. The nails.
Yep.
When we start back. When we start back, it's you.
Okay, she said it's not on there. It's not on mine either. I don't think, I think I took that one out.
You don't want to buy it. I'm telling Amber we need a bigger.
I don't have that. My thing, but I took that one out. I just came in at the kiosk right here. Okay, the meeting is now called back to order. Okay, next on the agenda, we have any comments of the administration? Seeing none? Are there any citizens' comments? Okay, I have, I have a couple of additions to the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to add to this. I'd like to make a motion, actually. I'd like to nominate Sean Denny to be on the Audit Committee on our Resolution Number 17 passed by the Council on December 1st.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam President, Madam President, can Counsel Giles repeat what he just said? I could not understand what he said. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Let's speak a little clearer here. I would like to nominate Council Member Sean Denny to the Audit Committee pursuant to the Resolution Number 17, 2022, passed by the Council on December 1st of 2022.
Did you hear that, Counsel Russell?
Sorry, technology. Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, Counsel Giles, and we have a second, Counsel Russomoroff. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? Roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Russomoroff.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counsel Russell.
Um, no.
Counsel Chavis, yes. Counsel Denny.
Yes.
Counsel Giles.
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot.
Nope.
Motion carries 7-2.
So Madam Chair, I can go ahead. I have another motion I'd like to propose as well. Pardon me. I'll make sure it's clear. Everyone can hear me. I'd like to move, I'd like to make a motion to move encumber funds of $125,000 from the Common Council's '22 service budget to pay the independent auditor that will be selected by the council pursuant to Resolution Number 17 passed by the council on December 1st of 2022.
Can you say that one more time, please?
Yes. I'd like to move to encumber $125,000 in funds from the Common Council's '2022 service budget to pay the independent auditor that will be selected by the council pursuant to Resolution Number 17, 2022, passed by the council on December 1st of 2022.
There's a motion, Counsel Giles. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel Whitfield. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Saw what was passed in the special meeting. Unfortunately, given the short notice, I was unable to attend. I'm just curious, the council does not have the authority to go out and sign a contract outside of legal services. So I'm just curious as to who is going to be signing this engagement contract with an outside CPA firm?
There's a separate state law that says the council has the authority to select an engagement contract with a CPA. So what is in that resolution is a reiteration of what the law says that the council can do. So that is not, that part of the code doesn't limit the council's authority to hire an independent under state law.
Is that code in the ordinance or the proposal?
Yes, the code's in the ordinance. I don't remember.
Yeah, because I'm looking at, I grabbed, I'm looking at the amended agenda that Kathy had sent out, and I don't see any of this on there. So apparently, there was another that he's referring to.
Well, these motions are all being made as a result of the meeting on December 2nd.
But it's not on our agenda. So I'm just curious.
But as the chair, as the president of the council, I can amend the agenda as I see fit, and so I've allowed for these motions tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It's Indiana Code Section 5-11-1-24.4.
Can I ask you to repeat that again real quick? Sorry.
It's Indiana Code 5-11-
Mm-hmm.
-dash, of course, I should get close. I'm sorry. 5-11-1-24.4.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Uh, yes.
Counsel Russomoroff.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counsel Russell.
No.
Counsel Chavis, yes. Counsel Denny.
Yes.
Counsel Giles.
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot.
Nope.
I believe you have another motion.
I do. I have a motion to make tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we approve the engagement letter presented to the council for Boz McKinney &amp; Evans LLP to provide legal service to the council related to the investigation and possible litigation of issues related to the 2022 council budget.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Can you repeat that after the meeting? I can give it to you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Uh, yes.
Counsel Russomoroff.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counsel Russell.
No.
Counsel Chavis, yes. Counsel Denny.
Yes.
Counsel Giles.
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot.
Nope.
Next, I think we have one last motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make another motion. You're correct. I'd like to make a motion to encumber $50,000 of the Common Council's '2022 services budget to pay a retainer to Boz McKinney &amp; Evans LLP under the engagement letter that council, under the engagement letter that council just approved.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Russomoroff. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Wells?
Something that I'd just like to point out for the record. We're basing this upon what we think we have. Money-wise, I would take it. And I know we were surprised to learn that we didn't have $5,000 for professional services to pay that attorney. So anyway, just, my concern is that we, not knowing where we're at, and I understand this is what we're hiring this attorney to do, but I do have a concern that we, you know, we can pay this $50,000. Just wanted to put that out for the record.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I would just address that by saying in the last meeting, at our special meeting, we did move the funds from capital improvement to services that will cover everything that's being discussed tonight. So we have actually more than enough in that service, in that budget line to cover that.
Any other?
I wasn't aware of that. So thank you, Counsel Denny.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Russomoroff.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Counsel Freeman.
Yes.
Counsel Russell.
No.
Counsel Chavis, yes. Counsel Denny.
Yes.
Counsel Giles.
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot.
Nope.
We're adjourned.